Orderance number nineteen dash fourteen and ordinance authorizing pursuant to chapter forty-four of Title XII South Carolina Code of Laws, nineteen seventy-six as amended. The execution and delivery of a fee agreement between Darlington County, South Carolina, and Project Peach and certain affiliates and matters related thereto. Request a carryover. Need a motion? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. One B, ordinance number nineteen dash fifteen, an ordinance approving an amendment to the agreement for development of a joint county industrial and business park by and between Darlington County, South Carolina, and Lee County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto Project Peach. Request carryover. Anyone wish to comment? Not all in favor say aye. Call to order. Imocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Douglas, do the invocation and Mr. Kilgus.
Father God, we all want to thank you, Lord, for last night's rest and a family of touch awakened of love this morning. And Father, we just want to thank you, Lord, for starting us on a new day and closing our rotten mind. And Father, we asking you today to come in this old building, bless each and every one that has attended today, oh Lord. And Father, we can ask the blessing for the ones that could attend and did not attend. And Father God, we asking you today, oh Lord, that go with us in homes, to hospitals, wherever the sick is, oh Lord. Father, we asking you to touch them, oh Lord. Father, we know that you have no medicine in him or your garment and any drugstore whatsoever. And Father God, we asking you today, oh Lord, that go with us, oh Lord, foreign countries. Touch our boys, girls, men and women. Give them some strength and foresight and a sense of coming home one day. And Father God, we asking you today, oh Lord, to lead us and guide us to this meeting in your name sake. Amen.
I move to amend the agenda, bring forward resolutions.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Coach Gare. Gare, team, please come forward. Coach and two ladies, as an alumni of Harpswell High, I can't tell you how proud I am of what your accomplishment. You've not only continued a great tradition in athletics, you surpassed, to my knowledge, as the only undefeated state championship team. Ladies, you'll cherish this moment, fifty years this year. Fifty years later, you'll be remembering almost every play, but you've set yourself apart from any other championship team when you undefeated season. And Coach, at this time, I'd like to read resolution. Resolution number seven oh four. Congratulations Harpswell High School Lady Fox's softball team, class four A, state softball champions. Whereas Harpswell High School Lady Fox's softball team is the class four A state softball champions. And whereas Harpswell High School Lady Fox's softball team finished the season with a perfect record of twenty-nine oh. And whereas Harpswell High School Lady Fox's softball, coaches, managers, team members, and staff have done an outstanding job in their display of good conduct and excellent sportsmanship in winning this title. And whereas the credit of this accomplishment, which has reflected upon Darlington County, is a source of pride to every citizen of the county. And whereas the example set forth by Harpswell High School Lady Fox's softball team is and will in the years ahead serve as an inspiration to every young man and woman in athletics. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing body of Darlington County, South Carolina, the Darlington County Council hereby expresses this congratulations to Harpswell High School Lady Fox's softball team, coaches, managers, and staff for an outstanding performance, presented the first day of July, two thousand nineteen.
Congratulations to you.
We finished twenty-nine oh, we finished number one in four A softball, we finished number one in the state in all of our class bases of softball. We finished in the max preps poll, we finished thirteenth in the country. We finished the USA Today Poll came out Thursday, was a week ago, we finished ninth in the country in the USA Today Poll, which is pretty strong for a little town like Harpswell. We put, then we put seven girls on the all-region team, had the region coach of the year. We put five, I think we had two, three all-state, two all-state, one to the north-south game. We had five at the South Carolina High School League Sports Report, five of top four A players came from our team. And I made coach of the year for that group too. But all the individual awards, you know, these girls will tell you, we weren't about individual, we were about team. Without being a team, you know, I brought up two girls from the junior varsity, the end of the year before that, we had eleven girls on the team. And one of the things I'm proud of is that all eleven girls played in twenty-eight of the twenty-nine games. And I'm not talking about just coming in to run a base, I'm talking about play, contributing. We probably had seven different girls win a ballgame with a base hit or a fabulous catch or something like that. So it was as much of a team effort as I've ever seen with softball. I mean, usually you have a couple of dominant players, we did. It was just whoever was on, we stuck with them and were successful with that. So hopefully we can continue to do it in our same game plan next year. Thank y'all for recognizing us, we certainly appreciate it. Because they, like I say, they went above and beyond. So thank y'all again.
Coach, just a second, I'd like to make a motion to that we accept the resolution.
Second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Resolutions number seven oh five.
Y'all ladies?
Resolution number seven oh five. Resolution number seven oh five, rename them animal control boulevard to adoption way. All in favor say aye. Citizens, comment?
John Smithy. Good evening, how y'all doing today? Appreciate you allowing me to speak, I'm probably riding a dead horse in my topic today, but my name is John Smithy, I live on sixty oh nine Society Hill Road. And my topic today is about the cellphone tower that we placed, some planning we placed on the Benton Farm. And so I just want to come by and throw in my two cents worth one more time. Thank you for allowing us to have a hearing with Mr. McMillan, I believe it was John Millan, excuse me, you know, so we can hear right into it. But I was told by the lawyer on the other side for the cellphone tower lawyer, after the planning commission, planning commission meeting, that the planning commissioners had to approve him because he had followed all the procedures and done his job, and so he had to be approved. My question today, maybe my councilman can help me out later on, is what was the purpose of a public hearing if they had to approve the cellphone tower permit to be built? Eleven percent to us, all the citizens within, I think twelve hundred, fifteen hundred feet of the tower, that we could come for a public hearing. But really, when I'm looking at the public hearing, it didn't mean a thing. It was going to automatically be approved because he had followed all the procedures. And so what we done, it didn't make any difference. And maybe somebody can answer that for me later on, but I didn't understand what is the purpose of a public hearing if it didn't make any difference because they were going to approve it anyhow. But like I say, I really appreciate y'all giving us a second chance at the second hearing. The second thing is, and like I say, I think I'm riding a dead horse today, because your mind's probably already made up because of the hearing, but what would you do, commissioners, if a cellphone tower was being built four hundred and fifty feet from your house? Would you be trying to do what I'm doing? Or some people would be happy and glad to get that strong signal, you know? But if a cellphone tower was being built four hundred and fifty feet from your house, what would you be doing? Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Cox, would you like to address the public hearing?
Pardon?
Would you like to address the public hearing?
Why don't we go through the process of the public hearing?
You want me to address that?
Yes.
Well, under the statute, once a decision is made by planning commission, any citizen has a right to appeal that. And that appeal was honored. And I think what the lawyer was saying is that applying for the purbiety, every requirement of the ordinance, allowing the cell tower was met and approved. And the court can listen to it, but Judge John Millen did what he was supposed to do. He looked at the law, he looked to see if every point had been covered, and so he approved what the planning commission had done. And you say, well, why go through a hearing? Everybody has a right for a public hearing. And that's the basis of a democracy. At the same time, I can understand why you may not want a tower that close to you. But at the same token, you'd have to change the law, the regulations, to make it more stringent if you wanted to. And in this case, all the terms and conditions of the law was met. So that's the reason I think the lawyer was saying, he felt like it had to be granted because every condition had been met.
Can I make a comment? Please. Okay. And like I say, I meant to say in the beginning of it, I do want the tower there. I want the tower somewhere on the Benton Farm. I'm not against the tower, I would like for it to be there, I just don't want it four hundred and fifty feet from my house. But still, you followed the procedures, you've done what the federal law probably required to do, but what is the purpose of public hearing? It don't mean a thing.
It gives everybody a chance to have.
It still don't mean a thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
I'll address that when it comes up to the time of the ordinance.
All right, let's go to the second one, ten minutes, Mr. Stephen Edwards, Free Medical Clinic, Darlington.
Chairman of the council, administrator. I just want to come and kind of update the council on what the free medical clinic is doing. I came in January and I've heard a number of people say, we thought you would close. Why do we still need a free clinic with the Affordable Care Act? Well, let me tell you. According to Department of Health and Environmental Control Statistics for Darlington County for two thousand and eighteen, fifteen point six percent of the adult population, or sixty-two hundred people adults in this county, have no insurance. Nineteen percent approximately delayed care due to cost. There were five thousand plus or minus avoidable ER visits, two thousand more or less avoidable hospitalizations. The stroke mortality rate for Darlington County over ten years is seven point six percent higher than the state average. And I love my barbecue, we eat a lot of barbecue in South Carolina, so South Carolina has a big high average, so that puts Darlington County way up there. Forty-two percent of our population is obese. The ten-year infant mortality rate is one of the highest in the state because a significant percentage of infants born to Darlington County mothers are born before thirty-seven weeks. That increases the likelihood of some medical problems. Also for two thousand and eighteen, according to the South Carolina Best Champs Network, Darlington County has the lowest incident, one of the lowest incidences of breast cancer in the state. But unfortunately, we have the highest, forty-six out of forty-six mortality rate for ladies diagnosed with breast cancer because they're not getting screened. Which is why, as you'll hear a little bit later, we partner with the Mobile MacLeod, MacLeod Mobile Mammography Unit, and will be at the Darlington Clinic on August twenty-ninth and the Harpswell Clinic on September sixteenth. There are a few slots left, if you know someone that needs it, especially our patient, having to get in touch with the clinic. Little history, the clinic was open its doors in August of two thousand. You'll see a lot of that, not the stats, but history in this brochure that I gave you. In two thousand and six, we opened Satellite Clinic in Harpswell. And just recently, about three weeks ago, Dr. Alex Cohen saw the five thousandth patient at the Darlington Clinic. In two thousand and eighteen, our stats show that over four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of free medicines were provided to uninsured people in the county. Now, it came via more than three thousand prescriptions. There were more than a hundred referrals from our clinics to specialists, either Harpswell or Florence. There were two hundred, more than two hundred doctor hours, volunteers, volunteers who work all day and come to our clinic and provide free care. More than two hundred hours volunteer nursing. And if you add all that up, over twenty years, the free clinic has provided more than twelve million dollars worth of free medical care to the uninsured residents of Darlington County. So and again, again, when I came, I heard, you know, why do we need the clinic? We thought we'd close. And there were a number of barriers, including the number of forms that we have to get. We've reduced that by more than fifty percent. We're trying to break down the barriers. The income level to qualify had been the federal poverty level plus two hundred percent. Well, you'll see a chart in there that for an individual, well, let's take a family of four. The family of four, the federal poverty level is about twenty-seven thousand dollars. For, well, for, so you multiply that times two, it's fifty-four. Fifty-four thousand dollars is the federal poverty level for a family of four. That qualifies you to be our patient. I just came off the state health plan, and when I shop for insurance for a relatively healthy fifty-seven-year-old, and in Darlington County, you know, we live forever, I was born and raised here, so, you know, my premium was seven hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. If you're making twenty-seven thousand dollars, or even two hundred percent of that, fifty-four thousand, and you're going to have a house payment and a car payment and groceries and utilities, there's not fifteen hundred, a thousand dollars left in the budget for medical insurance. So we have increased our income threshold from two hundred percent to three hundred percent. We'll now see patients up to three hundred percent. For that three hundred percent, they can come and get excellent primary care, free, free prescriptions, and significantly reduce referral rates to specialists and hospitalizations. For example, a recent, a patient came to us recently, needed thyroid surgery, she'll have that surgery next week. Our wonderful hospital in Harpswell, which is a great partner, as is MacLeod, MacLeod-Darlington, but Carolina Pines, that surgery was eighty-five thousand dollars. They discounted it to fifty-five hundred. She still can't afford it, so the clinic is paying that fifty-five hundred dollars on her behalf. The surgeon has waived their fee. So the income threshold moving from two to three hundred percent will help tremendously. Transportation is issued, many of our patients don't have transportation. They can get to our clinic, but they can't get to a specialist in Florence. So we've partnered with PDRTA, and now our patients can leave Darlington free and get all the way to the specialist, whether it be MacLeod, the oncology, whatever. We're trying to break down those barriers. We need, have, for many years, had a council there, they have not for the last few years. So we've partnered with PD Mental Health. PD Mental Health will start coming into our clinic in Darlington one day a month and seeing not only our patients, but their patients as well that may live here to get rid of that barrier. We're partnering with South Carolina Vocational Rehab. For those that may not work, have a slight disability, vocational rehab will come into our clinic one day a month and start seeing those folks. We're partnering with Man-to-Man. Man-to-Man helps individuals that are having some legal issues that may cause them to not be able to get a job. They're going to come and start seeing patients. We're partnering with the Florence-Darlington Technical College Dental Hygiene Program so that our patients can get there, have a free x-ray and a free screening one time a year. We're partnering with the Darlington Lions Club. They're going to come in and start doing vision screens. There's a lot doctors can tell by early vision screens, and if our, for our patients, we will pay for them, if the Lions Club says they need to go see an optometrist, we will begin to start paying for those visits. And then the patient would pick up the glasses cost, which would be somewhere between twelve and thirty dollars. So for those of us that have gone to an optometrist recently and gotten a pair of glasses, I did a couple of months ago, it was a hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and I had state health plan. We're going to cut that cost for the patient down to somewhere around twenty-five dollars. I mentioned earlier, we've partnered with MacLeod Mobile Mammography Unit, and both of those are just about full, we do have a few slots left. And for the last nineteen years, the clinic has operated on gracious volunteer hours. Physicians in Darlington, Harpswell, and some, we have a physician that comes from Kershaw every month to see our patients. And we're going to continue to work with those providers, but beginning later this month, I don't have an exact, later this summer, I don't have an exact date, we will have a full-time provider in our clinic, so we'll be able to see more acute illnesses, things like that. We are expanding, and there are a lot of folks that need our care, and I just want to make you all aware of that and let folks know that we're there. Harpswell is Monday and Tuesday, Darlington is Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman. The interesting thing on the optometrist or ophthalmologist is that I had to switch when one retired, and I switched and went to an ophthalmologist because my eyes were a little funky. That's when I found out I'd had a stroke. It's amazing. I didn't know I'd had one. It was detected by the ophthalmologist.
The early vision will help detect things like strokes, hypertension, which is sixty-seven percent of our patients have hypertension, high blood pressure. It will also do early diagnosis of diabetes. So we hope that we can impact in a positive way those very negative statistics I read.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
After the approval, next I want to. Okay, the sent agenda.
Through the approvals, sent agenda items six A through six F.
The second.
Second.
All opposed, ayes have it. Approval of minutes. Seven, eight minutes of public hearing and regular meeting, June the third, two thousand and nineteen. Move for approval. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Seven B minutes of special meeting, June twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Need a motion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
I move to amend the agenda to bring it forward to executive session for discussion of personnel matters as well as legal advice.
Second motion. All in favor say aye.
At this time, I move to go into executive session with members of council, our county attorney, and our county administrator for personnel matters and for purposes of legal advice.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a question for the attorney. The agenda says just personnel matters, can we add legal advice to that agenda on the day of the meeting?
Yes, you can, just open notice, yes.
Sir?
Yes, you can.
Even without public notice?
But you give a notice now, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Second session. You, if you do that, then the document with the final decision may use that.
Yes, sir. Orderance number eight A. Mr. Kilgus.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance eight A, ordinance number nineteen oh nine, an ordinance to amend Darlington County Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Section two dash two oh four. Immuneration in Chapter eighteen Emergency Services, Article Two Ambulances, Section eighteen dash fifty-two, Ambulance Service Commission, Section eighteen dash fifty-six. Unlawful to operate without franchise, Section eighteen dash fifty-seven, reporting procedures, and Section eighteen dash fifty-eight, limited members liability regarding the ambulance commission and the ambulance service district, and to establish effective date of this order, this is third reading, you can find it on page sixty-nine.
Need a motion?
Move for approval, ordinance number nineteen dash zero nine.
Need a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Eight B, ordinance number nineteen dash ten, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and between Darlington County, South Carolina, and Project Peach, providing for a payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto as amended. Third reading, move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it.
H C, ordinance number nineteen dash twelve, authorizing pursuant to Title XII, Chapter forty-four of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six as amended, the execution and delivery of fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreements by and between Darlington County, South Carolina, and certain companies identified completely for the time being as Project Dates Two, to provide for fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes incentives and certain special source revenue credits and other related matters. Third reading, move for approval of ordinance number nineteen dash twelve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Ayes have it.
Eight D, ordinance number nineteen dash thirteen, to amend the existing agreement governing the Darlington, Florence Industrial Park by and between Darlington County, South Carolina, and Florence County, South Carolina, to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain properties now or to be hereafter owned and or operated by companies identified for the time being as Project Dates Two, located in Darlington and Florence County, South Carolina, and authorizing other related matters. Third reading, move for approval.
Need a second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Mr. Douglas.
Orderance number nineteen dash fourteen, an order to authorize pursuant to Chapter forty-four of the Title XII South Carolina Code of Laws, nineteen seventy-six as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee agreement between Darlington County and South Carolina and the Project Peach, and certain affiliation and matters related thereto. Request carryover, second reading.
Need a motion?
Move to carryover, second reading, ordinance number nineteen dash fourteen.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it.
A F, ordinance number nineteen dash fifteen, an order to approving amended to the agreement for the development of joint county industrial and business park by and between Darlington, South Carolina, and Lee County, South Carolina, and others matter related thereto, Project Peach. Request carryover, second reading, page one fifty-nine, so move ordinance number nineteen fifteen to carryover.
Need a motion?
Move for carryover, nineteen dash fifteen.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it.
HG, ordinance number nineteen dash sixteen, and ordinance amending the agreement for the development of a joint industrial and business park dated November the eighteen twenty-ten, by and between Florence and Florence County, so as to enlarge the park project. First reading, no action needed.
H, ordinance number nineteen dash seventeen, to provide for issuance and sale of of not exceeding four million, two hundred thousand dollars general obligation bond for Darlington County, South Carolina, to the prescribed purposes for which the proceeds of said bond shall be expended to provide for the payment of said bond and other matters related thereto. First reading, uh, no action needed.
Eight, eight I, ordinance number nineteen dash eighteen, to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding four million, one hundred thousand dollars general obligation bond of Darlington County, South Carolina, Darlington County Fire Protection District, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be extended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto. First reading.
No action needed.
Ten, committee reports, none. Other items, eleven A, appointment to boards and commissions to feel vacancies, expired terms and non-attendance. Individuals whose terms expired can be reappointed. There is no limit on lower terms and individual that serve on a board, commission or committee, page one eighty-two. Mine would be a carryover.
Mr. Flowers, carryover. Mr. Davis.
Carryover.
Mr. Brown, carryover.
Okay. Eleven B, request for appointments to Board of Assessors appealed to lack of attendance, page two oh seven. Be a carryover also.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is put on here slightly separate from the normal committee appointments because they still are having trouble hearing appeals based on attendance of appointees to this board. This is a rather important board that wants the auditor, I mean not auditor, the assessor has reviewed the situation and they do not agree with the assessor, Kyle here, that it goes before this board of commissioners. They've received training from the Department of Revenue and then they hear the appeal. And how many cases right now pending?
Oh, right now we have one pending. It's been pending for over a year and a half.
Wow. So we need the people who are not present to either come or we need someone to be replaced so that we can have this board to do its meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask an administrative question?
Yes.
He may defer to the assessor. With the new reassessment, are we going to have more appeals?
You have potential, you have a high potential for them.
Okay. And that would fall under this group?
If they're not satisfied with the assessment, they won't move forward, yes.
Okay. And this is the year for reassessment because I've already gotten mine.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
So we've got two on here we need to look at.
Well, I believe you have two on there that show they've been absent completely for this period. And there's two others that have fifty percent absentee. Now the two new ones, which one of the really, Kyle?
And the wit and.
Empty base. Well, they just started, so.
Yeah, they just started.
Okay, so we need two more. What I'll do is.
Where the respective council members need to look at and say if they want these replacements to discuss with them, we'll get them here tonight.
Every time. Okay, so what do you want to see?
Just want you to be aware of it, or need you to be aware of it because they can't move forward unless you get a number, the right number of people to get in here. And it is an obligation of the county to do this.
Mr. Chairman, I will contact.
Okay.
This is not my point, but I will contact and I can just move Ian Weaver over. We'll do that next time.
This is, this is going to be a work.
We need to do that tonight, Joe.
If somebody wants to do an appointment tonight, they can. If not, I think it'd be something you need to be prepared for next night, if at all possible.
Well, I'll go ahead and appoint Ian Weaver to that board.
Your person has been attended, just so you know.
Oh, it's been.
Yes, your person has been.
You feel confident that she'll be in? But I will appoint Ian Weaver to the board there.
Can he appoint somebody outside of his district?
If you don't have someone due, again, this question, if you don't have somebody due, if they feel as prepared to serve in this committee, can they appoint somebody outside of the district?
Yes, again.
I thought I thought we could change that policy because we had had it before. If it was supposed to be, if we changed it, it was countywide, but.
I certainly remember you changed the term, like, so somebody you could reappoint term after term, but I don't remember.
I thought we had changed it, that we could appoint, it did not matter where they they didn't have to live in my district for me to appoint them as my representative.
She's looking at the code, the attorney.
I thought that's what we had done.
I don't understand because if that's the case, one person could almost, you know, appoint them ever, whenever, wherever. And I was thinking it was more of a.
What you have requires representatives from the eight districts.
You certainly changed the term limitations. I specifically remember reading that, but what's printed right here, and this would be the current code you would pull forward, still requires each council member to represent each, an appointed by each county council member to represent each of the eight council districts, subject to term limitations as described in another section, which that's what you certainly changed.
Yeah, but I thought what, but I thought what it, the way we interpreted it was that I could appoint someone regardless of where they live to represent me and my district on those committees, that they didn't have to physically live in District Five.
That's something.
Because we were running in such a difficult time trying to find people who were willing to serve on the different committees.
Do you know, is this the only reference you know of?
Do we need to change that reference?
We'd have to do three readings.
I was going to say. Yeah. All right.
Let's think about that and who would you search to be like this?
I can't find, um, to find anybody to serve is is the difficult part.
All right, well, we'll just carry over to the next hour. See appointment to PD work force development for private industry representatives. Nothing. The nominee was Mr. Jim Secretary of PD Electric.
He is a nominee.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it.
Eleven D, West End Heritage Corporation requests for donation to erect a monument memory of former employees, Darlington County Manufacturing Company, is page, um, page two fifteen, and there is a letter of reference also supporting or acknowledging request for twenty thousand dollars.
Need a motion?
I have to abstain.
No motion. So it dies. Okay. Lemon E, here, officer, recommendation regarding American Tower. Bent Brothers permitted to erect a cell tower at sixteen thirty-one, Society Hill Road in Darlington, page two nineteen. Okay. Need a motion?
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Point of order, I guess is best way, which I would then direct to the attorney. Is the proper motion is to approve the action of the planning commission?
It is.
Okay. Thank you. Therefore, I move the approval of the action of the planning commission.
Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
As I said earlier, I would try to explain the necessity of the public hearing.
Right.
And that is, sometimes lawyers make mistakes. They think they know it all and they don't. And the lawyer may have prepared the documents and there was something that was wrong and the public can correct that lawyer and that company and to prove that it has to come back and be done right. That's the reason for the public hearing. What that lawyer said, I don't particularly like. If he said it that way, I don't particularly like that. He should allow the public, for the planning commission to make comments and he should have kept his mouth shut. He or she, excuse me. But the purpose of the public hearing is to let the public question it and if they find something wrong in it, to bring it up to the planning commission. So that's the reason for the public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
May I just make one point, and I don't know if this can be added in, but I do think it's very important that the population in that area, when something like this appear or come up, they need to be notified, you know? And I don't know if it's possible to inform these people in the area.
Well, the statute, the Development Standards Ordinance lists who should have to be notified and unless you change your Development Standards Ordinance, those that were required to be notified, they were notified. They, they letters went out and they were sending information about it. And then, once it became for council, anybody, even if they weren't in that Development Standards Ordinance District, they were put on a list and the clerk notified them of the hearing and the results of the hearing.
Well, maybe I need to be more up to date on that particular part of, because I didn't read all the way through it.
Two thousand and fourteen, they were notified. Yeah, they were notified back then as well, but they were notified again because this was handled as a totally new permit. Even though that same site had been approved back then, this was handled as a brand new permit. Everything was gone over again.
Any other discussion? Not. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Eleven A, bid award for full depth patching on Vapor Road, four six thousand, three sixty, page two twenty-six.
Move the approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Bid award for roof replacement on the Robert Earl Rooms building in Lamar, page two twenty-nine. Need a motion?
Need a motion to set the bid award.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Bid award for Lake Garpole building, two hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars, page two thirty-four.
Mr. Douglas.
Need a motion?
Need a motion to set the bid award.
Seven. Thank you. All right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Administrative update.
Question, members of the council. Davis.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. To the, they already left, but congratulations to the softball team on there. Achievement, achievement. I don't play sports, but that's, that's something to go undefeated during this season. And I remember this name, the young man that's on here. Make sure I see you after the meeting because that's one of my people, so I can get this straightened out.
All right.
Thank you. And I'd like to also, yeah, Mr. Chairman, wishing my son, Jackson Davis, one year, first birthday. Happy birthday.
Should we have a prayer?
On this cell tower, it's in my district. I'm far it all the way, but I got his feelings. I wasn't more than four hundred and fifty feet from my house feeling. I wish there was some kind of way they could move across the road where Mr. Benton used to have them home. And that'd be right in front of his house, not on the side that they all abstained on. But that would, that'd be left up to them. I just, my feelings. But I'm not against it. They need it out there because there's some dead sparks out there that I took a year. That's all I have.
I'd also like to echo the composure of the softball team and also like to thank Mr. Epps for bringing that to our attention. And I know that was a humble moment for you. And I just hate that Mr. Cooper is not here so he can crow a little bit, but, but it is, I was very fortunate to have played on the state championship team. We were twenty-nine and O. Those young ladies will cherish that moment for rest of their lives. They will recall minute details, and that is, that separates them. There's something unique about a state championship team. They have the it factor. Coach Garrison did a great job and just kudos to the whole athletic department. And I really want to tell you how much I appreciate you acknowledging that.
Mr. Flowers. Mr. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'd just like to, uh, let everyone know that, uh, I had the pleasure of attending the, uh, South Carolina National Guard.
State Guard.
State Guard, excuse me, uh, induction ceremony. It was something I never attended. It was really good. I was really pleased with it. And it's good support for us in the area. It was in Florence and I had the honor of meeting some of the distinguished bridge air generals and, I mean, it was a really nice affair. Also, the next thing that I'm really interested in the stats that came from the Free Medical Clinic, especially Darlington County. I'm really, I'm going to kind of follow up with some of those stats because, I mean, there's alarming stats there expressing the stroke belt and all that type of stuff. I'm really interested in that. And that leads me to say that, um, I don't know if we're connected with the two one-one yet, Mr., uh, we kind of talked about that. And this connects the people in the county with the services in the community. So I, since I am a United Way volunteer, I'm going to be working, you know, in reference to that. And lastly, I really enjoyed the Newport. It was a really nice, fifty, and yeah, anniversary, very good, really nice. And Mr. Liberian, Chicken Little was very good. I tell you, you know, it's, it's, makes you laugh and it, and you're doing really well, not only in the library, but we have lots of things that are going good in the county, but you just can't go to everything. But I really appreciate that. It makes you really laugh and kind of forget about other things. Thanks, Mr. Epps.
I came back from Charleston today when I was on I ninety-five. I noticed near, I don't know if it was Jefferies Creek or one of the other ones, um, there was a, a, a pane where you keep the equipment, but it's, it allows them to watch the depth and, um, what's, how the creek is rising and falling and sends that information. We really need one of those on Black Creek. And if the county has to fund it, the county ought to fund it because it, it affects everybody from Lake Robinson all the way to the Florence County line and then afterwards. And so if the state's not going to fund it, we need to find some money to get that done. And with that, I will be quiet.
All right. I want to say congratulations to Horsel. That is a tremendous accomplishment for those young kids. And also, in Lamar on August thirteenth, Spectrum will be back four to six for another presentation and some giveaways of laptops to some of the kids. So, um, that's one good thing. I wish the council members would come. Public's invited. It's the first five G network in the state. It's the first five G network in the southeast with this type of equipment. Atlanta, Georgia doesn't even have this type of equipment. You can get speeds for two hundred to four hundred meg to one gig. So Lamar's open for business if anybody needs internet speed.
Mr. Chairman, what day you said it was?
August the thirteenth, four to six. And on that, that's all I have.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Second.